Yeah, thank you. Good evening. It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, June 28th, 2022. The regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission is now in session. That's a gavel. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Commissioner Tauber.
Here.
Chair Kuntzler.
Here.
Commissioner Wagstop.
Here.
Commissioner Swisher.
Here.
And Commissioner Chalmers.
Yeah.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. That's great. As is customary, we will invite anyone present who wishes to comment on matters that are specifically not on the agenda to do so now. And if you have such a comment or your question for the commission, could you please raise your hand, your zoom hand? Actually, I can't. Oh, here we go.
I can. I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, neither do I. My fingers are cropped up. Okay, great. Okay, so. Could we have, do we, okay, could we go to the planning director's report?
Thank you. I have some exciting news that we have a new planner that's going to be starting on the 5th of July. Her name is Jackie O'Neil, and so we're excited to have her. She's going to be an associate planner for the department. And Kristen has announced that she is retiring at the end of August, and so we are having interviews for the senior planner position next week also. So we'll keep you posted about that.
Do you know if there are any candidates?
Are there two being interviewed next week?
Oh, okay, great, great. That's just a hard job.
Right, they're big shoes to fill, too.
Big shoes to fill, you know, between just her knowledge of the law, the ordinances and procedure and managing, you know, managing, you know, the big reasons of various applications. I mean, it's just quite a big deal. So, well, I'm happy for her, not so happy for the planning department. Well, thank you. Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else. The Housing Committee is continuing to meet, and we're going to be setting up, I just had a meeting today, setting up some focus groups with renters and employees in the town to get their opinions on housing issues to incorporate into policies and programs for the housing element. So you might see advertisements for that coming up.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we can move on to this evening's two public hearing items. The first one is revisiting design review for 2138. That's number 21-38 for 47 Madrone. So if we could have any kind of follow-up report from the staff, that would be great.
All right, I'm going to do a report based on Kristen Teich's report to you, but I'll try to keep it brief, and I don't believe I'm going to be able to do plans and the report at the same time. So I will have plans available if you need to look at anything specifically. The 47 Madrone Avenue is a request to demolish and remodel and expand an existing 3,000-square-foot historic residence, including shifting the residence forward six feet and to the side two and a half feet. And the new ground story, with the new ground story and second-story additions, including an attached garage, the proposed residence would be 5,584 square feet with .29 FAR, where .40 is permitted by the code for this 19,384-square-foot flat lot. The application requires historic review to evaluate alterations to the historic resource. It also requires designer view of proposed additions and site improvements and heritage tree removal to allow removal of six heritage-sized trees. The Planning Commission considered this application once on May 24th, 2022, and the Planning Commission recommended reducing the size of the second-floor laundry room and a removal of the side-facing window to reduce possible impacts on the adjacent property. The commission was not supportive of the additional curb cut and new circular driveway. There was general agreement that the height of the covered porch at the rear should be lowered by at least a foot. The commission would allow replacement of windows and kind with review by the city's historic architect. And the commission required the historic siding on the front and side elevations to be retained as required by the city's historic architect, who indicated the siding should be repaired in place with waterproofing and sheer walls installed from the inside. The commission recommended relocating the new pool equipment to reduce the noise impacts and potential impacts to tree roots on the adjacent property. The applicant submitted revised plans that are under consideration tonight, and I'm going to allow the project architect to describe all the changes made to the project, but in summary, the applicant pulled the laundry room from the west side, eliminated the circular driveway, lowered the height of the covered porch at the rear, and is proposing replacement windows, and you have the design of those windows proposed. Staff in the staff report has raised concerns with door replacement that's proposed on the plans and recommends that the commission because, sorry, the Historic Preservation Board and Historic Architect have recommended retention of all the doors. And as noted at the prior meeting, retention of historic materials features windows and doors are key to meeting the standards versus historic preservation and replacement of all the existing materials was considered not preservation, but replication. If the commission determines the doors should be retained, it should specify this in the conditions of approval and delete condition number 1C. The pool equipment was shifted along the minimum side, set back towards the rear lot line, but did not, it was not shifted away from the side lot line as requested to mitigate noise impacts. And if the commission determines the proposed relocation of the equipment is not sufficient, the commission could require the pool equipment to be relocated as a condition of approval, or in addition to relocating, or just as an additional condition, you could require the pool equipment to be completely enclosed to reduce the noise, and staff has included an additional condition of approval for the commission to consider under number 1C, which would require the pool equipment to be enclosed. Since the stack report was prepared, the applicant has submitted a letter from their own architectural historian that does support replacement of the siding as something that could be done while still complying with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Restoration of Structure, and they have detailed the the methods that should be used in order to remove the siding in order to waterproof and put in any sheer wall and then replace it, and if the planning commission would like to follow that historic architect's standards and allow restoration of the exterior siding, you would want to add that as a condition of approval, which would probably be under 1B, altering the condition to 1B to allow that siding replacement subject to the conditions in the Architectural Historian's report. The City Historical Commission had recommended retention of that exterior siding, and it was discussed at the last meeting. The city's historic architect is concerned, number one, that only deteriorated material should be replaced and not just the siding just shouldn't be removed if it's not necessary, and she does believe that any work to the sheer wall and waterproofing could be done from the inside of the structure. With, so you have some options regarding the siding in terms of going with the city architectural historians recommendations versus the applicant's architectural historian recommendations, and then an alternative could be to have that particular issue be considered by the architectural, the historical commission to let them consider both of those reports. I will say that our city historic architect did say that she would want to review this issue at the time when more details are provided on the structural the structural drawings of the building permit stage, because at that point, she would be able to see what, if sheer walls are required for that wall and and have just more details in order to consider the request for replacement siding and what's necessary for the structures construction. So staff is recommending that the planning commission consider if the revisions that had been made to the project adequately address the concerns that you raised at the prior hearing, and if so, we recommend approval of the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval provided in the staff report. And that concludes my staff report. Unless you have any questions, and I can pull up the plans, I do have them here if you want to see anything, and I could also pull them up if the applicant would like me to go through them for their presentation.
Thank you very much, Elise. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for Elise? Natasha?
Yeah, I had a question. You did touch upon it, and I think you mostly addressed it, but regards to the new window design, and I guess deciding, is this something that we are required to submit back to the Heritage Board? And/or required to take the recommendation of the advisor, or is it kind of up to us?
The larger concern about the historic resources, the California Environmental Quality Act, and doing anything to the structure that would impair its historic significance, because that would require an environmental impact report. It wouldn't mean that it can't be done, but it needs an environmental impact report and potentially a statement of overriding consideration saying it's okay. So one of the questions is, would the work destroy the significance of a historic resource and then and then this, and so you would be relying on a an expert to give you that advice. And so this project has gone through the Historical Commission and has the report of the Architectural Historian to give you that advice regarding that feature and whether or not it would damage the historic resource. Ms. Holan, I see, is in the audience, and she, I'm sure, would be willing to give you information about that particular issue and her recommendations regarding the window. The same is true with the siding, so if if you, you need to rely on something in order to find that the structure is complying with the Secretary of Interior Standards, and it does happen that sometimes you have competing historians coming up with different conclusions about those treatments, so it is, you can make the decision and rely on one of them, but it is good to have a, good to be relying on some evidence for that conclusion that it's not damaging the historic resource in a way that would require preparation and environmental impact report.
Right, thank you for that, but just to clarify then, does it have to go back to the Heritage Board?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have to, but you could, you could, you could recommend it or pieces of the project, so not necessarily the whole project, but maybe if there's certain issues he had concerns with, you could, you could recommend, you could have a decision that's more conservative, but allow them to take into consideration an alternative.
Natasha, do you mind if I just follow up on that?
Yeah, please.
Well, I still remember what I'm following up on. So just, well, one thing is procedurally, could be put as a condition of approval that the applicant has to follow the recommendation of another board, the Heritage Board, once they revisit it. Or, or consultant, or Ms. Holan. Is procedurally is that allowed? And I guess the second part of that is that we say, well, we can, we can, we can go ahead and improve the application if we see fit, regardless, but wouldn't that have us run afoul of CECL? Potentially.
Depending on the issue, so let's say, yeah, just because the siding was recommended for preservation, obviously, you want to follow the recommendations of your historic preservation board and would want their input, but like I said, his architectural historians can disagree over treatment of historic property, too, so you could, you could go with the applicant's report if that supports the position that you want to take, and you find what they're proposing is reasonable. Or you could, you could also, I wouldn't send the whole project back to the, because that's just, but if you did, if you did, if you did give them the approval authority over certain elements, I don't see that as a problem, because the applicant would have the right to appeal that decision if that was, they could always come back to you.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Natasha, for having interrupted you, but go ahead.
No, and I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, then. So you had said, Elise, that in the the package that came, the updated package, obviously, there's a new window design, but there's also a letter from their historic architect saying that this works.
Or the applicant's historic architect has provided support for alteration of the siding.
For some reason, I don't see that. Can you just point to where that is?
It would be.
It was a letter that came today or yesterday.
Yeah, so it's on, if you're in the agenda, you can click on.
Oh, so it came by email. That's probably why, didn't it?
Right, right.
Okay, I see it.
And it's posted on the, it's posted online.
I found it. Thank you. I was looking at the original materials in the package.
That letter is just specific to the siding since the window issue had been, it seemed somewhat resolved after the last meeting, so they were, they were just submitting details to to show what type, that the windows would be replaced and kind.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Elise?
I guess I've just recapped, so I make sure I understand. So there were three parts to this. I hear historic review, design review, heritage tree removal. So we could, as a commission, vote to approve this project with the changes that they proposed pending approval by the historic architect of the changes to the windows and the siding. And that they would have to get agreement by the historic architect to do that. Is that true?
I believe you could do that. So the alternative would be they keep them. So they would have, essentially, you'd be saying they have to retain the windows and the siding unless they get approval from the, from the historic board to do something different. But it gives them an option, but I think I see that as an okay, or an alternative that you have available.
And Laura, just to clarify, I think you mean the historic board, the Heritage Board, as opposed to the actual architect. It's the board that has to do the approval.
Although, I think, I think the board would then go to the historic architect to review.
Get guidance, yeah.
And the same applies to the doors, Elise?
Yes. I mean, so, yeah, you could, you could require the, you could require them to be retained, but allow a different result if that historic board finds differently.
Laura, do you have anything further?
No, I mean, I think it's, I think, I'm pretty clear, I think, on my feelings about this.
Jeff or Brock, do you have any questions for Elise?
No, I'm not. I'm just following along. I'm satisfied with what I've heard.
Okay, I just have one other question. Did, did, did you or Kristen get any explanation for the choice of the replacement trees, because it's in the report that the trees that they're proposing are non-native or some of them are?
I think, well, but I'm actually just making this up, and the architect could probably provide that, it's just that because they're providing in their rear yard area and selecting them for screening that they pick plants that would be appropriate for that. As a, you know, as opposed to if they were planting new redwood trees within the redwood forest, they might have had a different selection. But I would defer to the applicant to answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, then, with that, I would like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to make any remarks that they would care to make at this point.
All right, you should be getting the opportunity to talk. I promoted both the applicant and their project architect.
Yeah. Okay. So I see. Okay, would one of you gentlemen or lady wish to speak first?
Yeah, hi, Kurt Halcooper. Thank you very much for coming together again. This is the third public forum. Hopefully, we can get this finalized. I think everybody, it seems like everybody recognizes we've made significant changes, modifications since our last meeting. And I think we did that because we listened to the neighbors and what they were interested in. We listened to the commission, we listened to the planner, so I think what we're focused on right now, what we're hoping for is that this forum is set up to focus on the issues of energy efficiency in the house, having moisture prevention in the house, having a very modern house that can be energy efficient, so that's hopefully where we are in the process, and we're excited to get started. Rob, do you want to take over?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll just quickly run through the design changes that we made. Starting with, and I'm just going to follow the staff report here, but in the laundry room, of course, we reduced it by about 12% overall, but primarily pulling it away from the west property line by 18 inches and eliminating a proposed window on the west wall, so we feel like we've done quite a bit to mitigate impact on the neighbors to the west and still retain the, primarily the roof design that was, I was concerned about, so we're good, we're good with that. The driveway, of course, we've eliminated the circular driveway, the street parking remains unchanged, and we have some extra parking spaces that hopefully will help us turn around. That was the reason for the circular driveway. But we are okay with that. The covered porch, I think the owners and I are both very comfortable with this solution where we introduced a step-down from the inside to the outside and thereby lowered the structure by a foot as was discussed at the previous hearing. On the historic window replacement, I'm proposing a custom-made window that's, that will be manufactured by one of the larger window manufacturers in the country, which is Marvin Windows. And the reason I'm suggesting that is we can have a wood window that will be wood on the interior, but the exterior will be a material that they call Altrex, which is a fiberglass material that allows for a thinner profile on the, all the mountains in the windows, so much easier to replicate the original design that way and still come up with a window that is weather-tight, airtight, energy-efficient. So we are, that's, that's the reason for proposing that particular window. Regarding the front door and the French door, we're talking about two openings, you know, in the entire house. The French doors, we've inspected them, they are in very poor condition and would be very difficult to repair, certainly to make energy efficient would be virtually impossible, and it sort of, it seems inconsistent to me to say that, you know, the windows that are three feet away from the door can be new, but the door should be the original door when they're both of the same nature and the same design, so we can replicate those doors exactly with the same product, the Marvin product, and have everything match and replicate the existing design. So we are proposing to use the same product, the same manufacturer, and the same design for the doors that we're using for the windows, which, as I said, are less than three feet away from each other in the same room. Replacement trees, you know, what we proposed are screening trees that are very common in Marin County. You see podocarpus regularly as well as the English laurel, either one. You know, we're fine with non-native, you know, it's, it's, I don't think that there's, there are very many areas where only native species are allowed, but in this case, they're going to serve the screening purpose better, and they thrive here in Marin County, so that's why they're proposed in the locations that we did. The porch details, seems like the historical architect was happy with that, so we're happy with them, and we will include those in our permit package as requested. On the pool equipment, this is a tough one, because we have very limited options. We frankly don't care all that much where it goes, as long as it's not sitting out in the middle of the backyard. But in looking at this thing and talking to the neighbors, what occurred to me is that possibly the best solution would be to leave the pool equipment where it is now, which is tucked in a corner, out of the way, doesn't impact the neighbors nearly as much as it would if we moved it, and the only reason that we haven't moved it is that Kristen said it would require variance to move it. So I would suggest that the commission consider allowing us to just leave the pool equipment where it is and you know, potentially mitigate everybody's concern with that solution. Sometimes the, sometimes it's better that if it's not broken, to tend to fix it. So that I think were the primary issues. Now, I did want to weigh in on the historic siding, of course, and just let you know that after our last hearing, I set out to do some research on how other historic projects have handled waterproofing exterior walls from the inside. And as you might guess, what I found was overwhelmingly that they didn't. It's a a solution that I have yet to find anybody who can tell me how to do it or recommend how you would install waterproofing from the inside. It's not feasible, it's not practical, and it can potentially actually exacerbate the problem with siding that is one, depending on how you would waterproof it from the inside, loses the ability to breathe through the material, loses the ability for air to flow through cracks in the siding and joints in the siding, so potentially it's going to lead to a quicker deterioration of that material over time. So as I was researching this, fortunately, I was referred to a historic architect who has extensive experience in projects that are very similar to 47 Madrone. And I've asked Mark Holbert to join us tonight and share his expertise with the commission on how siding is regularly reused in historic projects, so I believe he's on the call, and if you wouldn't mind, Elise, I would like to invite him to join us.
And that will be a good time, yeah. Can you, there we go. Okay, Mr. Holbert, you have the floor.
Thank you. The screen. Thank you. Good evening, commission. I was asked, hopefully, we'll cut through this quite quickly for you. I think you understand the issues. I asked a simple and earnest question by the architect. Is it appropriate and feasible to remove and reinstall historic wood siding? As my correspondence, and I emphasize, to remove and reinstall, not replace, unless that was required, and it isn't. Is it appropriate and feasible to remove and reinstall historic wood siding? As my correspondence addresses, the answer is yes, and specifically so in order to comprehensively weatherproof a building from the exterior. Under the standards in CECL, I professionally address such material issues on a wide variety of historic buildings, two of which I have included in my correspondence, two relevant examples of which I've included in my correspondence, where I have defined and overseen the removal, repair, and reinstallation of woodboard siding and trims on other actually highly important historic buildings that went through extensive CECL and federal reviews. It is not difficult. I mean, the reality is, it's not difficult to do so, yet obviously requires skilled carpentry, and that's It yet obviously requires skilled carpentry. And that's the bottom line. It requires skilled carpentry. Along with, in fact, the owner's commitment. Because doing so. Demonstrates a level of commitment over and above fixing an exterior. As as Rob has pointed out, that the the logic is simple. You can't weatherproof a building. The exterior of a building from the interior. It really requires an exterior solution. And we turn to this methodology frequently in order to accomplish a a more comprehensive. S- strengthening, of course, but also weatherproofing of the building, which is, which is an increasingly high priority. Not to to downplay the importance of of historic issues. But the obviously sustainability issues are on par these days and perhaps even elevated. So. It 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 is a a way of achieving balance and and the methodology, I've laid out the methodologies for doing so, which are ones I've applied to other. Um, similar projects. Glad to answer questions, but I think I just addressed the si- situation, excuse me, simply there and and with thanks for your ears.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate it. Um, okay, if uh if uh. The applicant and Mr. Wilkinson have concluded their remarks, I'll ask if my fellow commissioners have any questions for you.
I I have a, just a quick question, Daniel. I'm, you know, in terms of weatherproofing, one of the other things, obviously, that. If you take siding off, you can also improve sheer walling. Uh, of these kind of buildings from the exterior, from the studs, from the outside in. Uh, is there a plan if, for instance, you can't do that? Is there a plan to sheer wall this from the inside? Or is that not part of the plan? Because these old buildings clearly, they don't have, you know, sheer walling mostly. Is, am I correct in that?
Uh, yeah, so we we certainly can can provide uh sheer walls on the interior and that's done, you know, regularly. It's a common practice. Uh, and even in non-historical buildings sometimes. So that that structural structurally, that is not our our concern so much. It's uh. It's with the exterior weatherproofing of the building where the where the where the the problem lies.
Yeah, the the other question I had is, you know, lately, there has been a lot of, the fire department has been going around to all the houses in my neighborhood, and I'm. Assuming all in Larkspur and 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 requiring changes like cutting trees out, doing various things. And. One of the things that they require, uh, they asked us to do at our house, and our house is a nineteen thirty's house. Is to replace all our single pane windows with double pane windows for fire reasons. Um, it would seem to me that this is a consideration we should take into account. Uh, in replacing your French doors and in your windows is that from a fire standpoint, it's far safer to have double pane than single pane windows.
Well, that's absolutely true. And in fact, I had that conversation with the fire marshal. And he reiterated that his his recommendation would be that all the. The windows should be double painted and uh and meet, you know, fire resistant standards. So. That that certainly would be supported by the fire marshal.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, I'm bringing it up because I think that's a very important consideration, given that the, you know, they're really going to town on making these recommendations of. They're they're like, not making them as recommendations, they're making them as you need to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. Um, any of the other commissioners wish uh to ask any questions of our applicant?
I I have a quick question, Rob. So how how are you proposing you take off the siding?
Well, Mark actually outlined um in his proposal pretty specifically the requirements for it, and I I would. Propose to follow those, but um but the basic answer, Brock, is that we would cut the nails from the inside. Uh, face of the siding and release them from the the studs. And then, piece by piece, the siding would be taken down by hand and uh in some. Cases, I think catalogued, but certainly um stored on site and or preferably on site, but uh. Um, but that's how it would actually physically be removed is from the inside by cutting the nails.
Okay, can you, have you, is there any way to tell whether that's original siding? Uh, in other words, it's was eighteen ninety, right? And um. Uh, it's hard for me to believe that somebody didn't already place the siding, but um maybe that's not the case.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Eighteen ninety, the nails, are you dealing with square nails or are you dealing with regular nails?
You know, I I haven't actually uh tried to find a a nail or or pull a nail or anything yet. But I I seriously doubt that it's eighteen nineties material.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you, Brock. Um, Laura Natasha, uh, do either of you have questions for the applicant? Uh, Natasha?
Yeah, and this might be um an ignorant question, but. So just to, I understand then the um, the applicant is proposing to remove and. Rehabilitate and reinstall. Is that my understanding? As opposed to remove and replace with something identical?
Exactly. It's, it really, it's 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 a reuse process. So the the intent here is to. Reuse all of the siding. And um a- as I think we mentioned at the last hearing, in the event that there was s- some. Siding that was damaged in removal, we have three other sides of the building that we can remove and use. As siding uh for the for the front facade. So so we have um. Plenty of material to to make this work. And and the the issue is, can we use the same siding and put it back in place just like it is now? Or can we, you know, or not? And and that's what we're proposing is that we reuse it and reinstall it.
And that's the same with the windows? Or the windows are brand new?
Windows are new.
Windows are brand new. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I just have uh two uh quick questions. With regard to the historic front door, um. Could you uh, could you describe its condition as to why that has to, that has to replace? Uh, I I'd love to look at the French door, talking about the front door.
The front door?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I mean, that that door uh. Is is, it's not the same uh and and it's not the same as the windows or the French door. So it would be, it's sort of a different animal. It's a solid wood door with panels. And uh, again, sort of, as as Brock suggested before, I mean, I whether or not that's from eighteen nineties. I I'd I'd be surprised. Um, but uh, that door. You know, if if we had to uh. For some reason, if if it was that door that that we had to uh retain and and reuse, then. It it would be the easiest one to to make work.
Yeah, that's that's kind of, that's kind of my point. So uh, yeah, well, we'll discuss that later, so you know, how we formulate a motion. Um, and then uh with regard to the um, you know, the pool equipment, and I, you know, if I fully understand that. Uh, your proposal here is not whimsical. Uh, that's, you know, makes sense from this several standpoints. Um, but have you been able to engage in the the neighbor about that and what a possible solution would be, which would allow you to. Uh, retain the approximate location of the uh, uh, of that pool equipment shed or pool equipment?
Well, uh, Kurt may be able to speak to this this one. Um, you know, early on, I I believe that. Um, the neighbor suggested that it it was, she preferred it where it where it is now than to where we had proposed to move it. Uh, Kurt, do you have any further information there?
Yeah, that's correct.
And did you discuss any enclosure solution?
Well, we we're proposing a a fence around it, but we're happy to enclose it, you know, however, uh, it it. The, you know, commission feels like it would improve things. I mean, not opposed to a a full enclosure, but uh, you know, the the the. The flip, the flip side of that is, you know, we can, we can just basically conceal it with a four-foot fence. Um, but if you want to enclose it, we need to build an eight-foot structure around it. So. Uh, my opinion is that that's more intrusive than than just uh screening it with the fence or with planting.
Yeah, I I was thinking more in terms of sound isolation, which is a difference, because you know, I I actually do have a a pool myself and. And you know, it ours is in enclosed, but you know, it it does make some noise. You know, ours is enclosed enough, so it doesn't disturb the neighbors, but you know. It's not, it's not a silent thing.
Yeah.
So, well, we'll we'll discuss that, we'll discuss that later. Uh, that's what we might want to propose. So if there are no further questions for the applicant from the commission, I would like to uh invite. Members of the public uh present this evening, if they would like to say something. I see two uh two hands raised thus far. So um. The uh, the hand identified is Susan. Um, would you, uh, do you have any questions or comments? And if you could please unmute.
Yeah, um, I'm I'm the neighbor next door to Kurt that um shares the. Fence line with the pool equipment, and we are just fine leaving it exactly where it is, and it does not need an eight-foot fence around it. Um, it's, we don't hear it. Um, my concern. Previously was when it was on the original um plans, it was right a, right by our. Grove of redwoods and um that that didn't sit too well in terms of. You know, I'm assuming the roots would be right there as well. So, yeah, leaving it where it is is just totally fine with us.
Leaving where it is on the plans?
Uh, where it is currently.
Currently on the plans, or where, okay.
Yeah, where it is currently, it's right along by our um fence line and it um. Is at the back of Kurt's property. So uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, if Susan has nothing further, um, Todd Schneider. I see your hand is raised. And if you could unmute, so.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, so we are the neighbor on the other side. We're on the Magnolia side of those guys and. Let me kind of preface my comments with saying that we are in the, at the tail end of a year-long remodel of our own property. And the Help Coopers have been great. They've been fantastic neighbors and we're so thankful. Uh, that they bought that property and removed it, and we're really looking forward to having them as our neighbors. Uh, we're in favor of progress, we're in favor of making Larkspur better, we're in favor of change. We're in favor of just improvements generally. Um, and, you know, in my own humble view, between my property and the Help Cooper's property. Uh, it really represents the best of Larkspur, some of the coolest properties we have with the redwoods. And the historical value, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm so glad they have it. I'm so glad that they want to. Spend uh the money to make it what should be just a beautiful home. Um, you know, in my professional life, I'm a lawyer and a litigator, and that is not what this is. This is not adversarial. Um, my comments I'm about to make are really to try and make. The project better for everybody, better for the neighborhood, better for us, better for the Help Coopers. Um, our objection, and that's even a stronger word than I want to use, but our concern is. Um, that on the uh master bedroom side of their proper si- property. Uh, it's a very large structure, which is very close to our property line. Uh, my understanding is that the Help Coopers originally wanted to have that structure further off the property line. But the Historical Society mandated what what is a fourteen-foot breezeway. Between the historic piece of the house and what is now their garage and master bedroom. Um, what that means for us is that the structures are, that we've got a huge tall structure. Uh, I don't know the exact dimension, but somewhere between six and ten feet off of our property line that we can see out of our bedroom window. Um, I understand the need to to keep historic properties historic, but this is a new structure. Um, and I think we have to balance the needs of the neighbors and against the needs of the Historical Society. So our. Our proposed solution is that uh we go back to the Help Cooper's original. Uh, set of uh recommendations, which is don't have that breezeway. Move that structure close to the historic property. Uh, that gives us an extra fourteen feet off the property line. It allows for proper, for privacy trees between our properties. It's more fire safe. Uh, with the proximity of the large structure and our structure. Um, a fire easily jumps between properties, and I have no idea how we get any privacy trees between our property and theirs. And it's just better for everybody. And I know that the Help Coopers originally suggested their garage be in front of their home like ours is. Uh, another great solution. But again, um, they're doing. They're good, they're doing good work for Larkspur, they're doing good work for them. Uh, they're doing, I think, uh, work that is going to be gorgeous. Uh, but we're just hoping that uh the committee could see. Their way to allowing the Help Coopers to move their property off of mine by eliminating the breezeway, uh, which would be better for all of the neighbors. Um, and my wife Devon is next to me, and I think she may or may not have some. Uh, set some things to say, but uh again, uh, we're so excited to have Help Coopers as neighbors. They've been great for our project. We're going to be great for their project, but we're just asking for this one small change.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you very much. Um. Um, is there anyone else in your house who wishes to speak right now, who's on the same line?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I see another hand raised on a uh on a cellphone. I can guess who that is. And if you could unmute, there we go.
Uh, James Holmes. James Holmes, Larkspur. Uh, and just a question about the windows. I know when when the. Uh, concept of replacement was discussed at the last meeting, and I believe approved in concept. Uh, I, my impression was that the assumption was that they were going to be uh wooden windows. Uh, rather than fiberglass. And uh, these are going to be apparently wooden on the inside and fiberglass on the outside. And I wonder uh if uh you shouldn't hear from the historic architect as to whether or not uh the. Interposition of fiberglass windows would further uh degrade the historical character of the structure. Thanks.
Um, yeah, I I I, I believe the the issue of the windows will be um. Will be referred back to the um heritage, um, the heritage, heritage board. Um, thank you, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Um, I don't see any other hands raised. I'll wait five seconds, we're at a last chance. So still seeing none, I'm going to uh close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the commission for. Our deliberations. And uh, Jeff, can I start with you?
Actually, can I interrupt for one second? Sorry, Daniel, do we want to have the applicant comment on the neighbor's request? Or is that maybe not appropriate at this time? And I'm, to be honest, I wasn't sure if that was a change from the prior plans to the current plans. Because I couldn't actually see where this breezeway was.
I think it, I think it was even prior, my 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 reading of G-Liz was that it was even prior to that. Oh, so actually, you know, maybe. Maybe we can do that, uh, Natasha. So I'm going to reopen the public uh meeting and and ask if uh. Uh, either Mr. Hoot Cooper or Mr. Wilkinson would care to comment on the suggestion that was made by Mr. Schneider. Okay, see, Mr. Wilkinson's back with us. And you've got the floor.
Let me know if it would be helpful to show any of the plans, Rob, or you can show them.
Sure, um. Yeah, it it might be helpful to show the three D uh view from the street. Uh, but I can certainly address uh the comments.
I'll bring it up.
Okay, so I I would start with with pointing out that the uh. The the design as as shown uh on the on the the plans and particularly on the site plan. Uh, it calls for a an eleven-foot setback to the um. The nearest point on the uh west, excuse me, on the east side of the uh the new addition. Um, and the required setback is six feet. So we are almost double uh the the required setback on that side. Um, but uh. And and I think that's one of the reasons that. and and I think that's one of the reasons that uh both Kristen and Jerry Holland have have uh always supported this version of of the design. But but more importantly, um I want to s- address the issue of of eliminating the breezeway, which um it for for from the from the standpoint of uh the historical uh architects uh input on this project. Um you know, the real breakthrough occurred when we took the um the design license to really try and separate the new addition from the old structure. And the way we did that, the way that that was accomplished was we literally pulled the the new addition away. Um and created this breezeway. This breezeway is actually six feet from the current uh uh balcony or the current uh entry porch that that wraps around the 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 house. So uh when we did that, we pulled it away, we created this separation and this illusion that you can see here in this three D rendering of uh a separate structure, a separate structure that proportionally and aesthetically ties to the to the original, but doesn't compete with it. And that's really what the historical architect was pushing for is we want this addition to be in the in it recede into the background. And we made the connection at the very back of the of of the 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 structure uh with a bridge so that you can literally see through all the way to the backyard uh as you're approaching the house from the street. And that's what gives it uh, you know, the the sense of two distinct structures, which is really the whole sort of uh uh the the whole sort of point of of this type of uh historic rehabilitation is to let the uh historical structure stand on its own. So that's really how we made it happen. And I and I think that uh, as I said, it was a breakthrough in the design and uh we've pretty much got nothing but compliments on it uh ever since. And and so I would, I would uh say that that to to consider pushing that addition back and and attaching it to the to the existing house. Uh I I can't imagine a historical architect ever supporting that as a design.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for that that clarification. And thank you Natasha for um asking for it. Okay, so I'm going to re-close the um the public hearing for this item and bring it back to the commission for our deliberation. And I am still going to start with Jeff.
All right, very good. So I think this is a wonderful project. I think it's beautifully done. It's uh architecturally um very coordinated. And I think it it in it as Mr. Wilkinson said, the way that that uh addition is designed uh definitely signals that the original house is intact from a historical perspective while modernizing it. So I I would agree with him that changing that would really change this the whole flavor of the plan. And uh I think it would be you know, a a lesser house if that was done. I I do appreciate uh the neighbor's concerns, however, but I think that um uh I I like the design as it is and I would not favor uh changing it. Um as to the changes, I think it's up to the historical commission more than us about the changes to the you know, how the original siding is maintained or the windows. But that being said, I think you you have to modernize structures uh to make them fire safe and you have to waterproof them uh to make them viable structures. And uh I think no no historic building has not been untouched. Um in some ways, as long as you maintain the integrity of it, I think that uh you do what you need to do in order to make them safe and habitable. And I think that uh whatever can be done to maintain that historical integrity while doing the modernization that allows for a habitable structure is important. Um other than that, I'm I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a great project.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Brock, can I move on to you?
Yes, you can. Um so um a lot of this really boils down to what the Historic Preservation Board feels and um having been on the other end of this kind of thing where uh we were not allowed to put in double pane windows in in the past in historic preservation. Um I I think it's, I think it's uh, I think it's foolish in terms of what you create. Um you can, so replication versus uh restoration is really the keynote and I would say that I'd have to, you know, I'd have to uh defer to the Historic Preservation Board on some of these things. I did not, one of my questions was whether the windows were clad. I think um you know, even if you replace the windows, they probably should be uh wood as they were in the past. Um so that they can be painted and changed um in in the future. Um and it's sort of consistent with with that kind of house. And I think um I think you need the breezeway absolutely. And the separation between uh the master bedroom and the the rest of the house and it in sort of uh bringing out the historic house uh forward is really important. And I think there's a pretty hefty setback on that side, uh given that six often five feet is the side yard, six feet in the bigger lot and and they have eleven feet. So I don't have a problem with that. Um you know, the siding, I assume uh what was explained to me and how they're going to take it off is is probably as good as you're going to get. And again, I think the Historic Preservation Board is going to have to decide if you can take off the existing siding and then reinstall it. Um you know, replication uh makes it look the same too. So uh I I I would support the house and and what they're proposing. Um I think the windows should be wood, but that's that's my thoughts on it so far.
Okay, thank you. Uh Laura.
I'm not on mute. Um I really like the project and I I think the bottom line is everybody else is kind of said is, you know, the historic review and um what the Preservation Board is going to think about um replacing existing things with similar things. I'm actually kind of supportive of the applicant in that I think it's it's not just a fire issue, a part of it is um, you know, it's all environmental stuff, right? It's 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 better for energy um consumption to have double pane windows. Um and so on, it it just, you know, it's kind of bringing the house up into the modern day, which makes sense to me. Um my one reservation is that I I I don't want to overrule what the Preservation Board has determined. Um so my inclination would be to support the project and approve it. Um pending further review by the board with with the the recommendation of this commission that um there be consideration for the basically the the updating of these elements um that 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 retain the the historic character of the house, um even if they are new elements.
Okay, um thank you. You know, when we um when we make a motion, we'll try to, you know, we'll try to, you know, capture all of that. Um Natasha.
Yeah, thank you. Um you know, my comments just are generally in line with the my fellow commissioners here. Um and I will actually say I completely agree with uh Commissioner Swisher's comments. That doesn't always happen. So I think um so I think I there there's not too much to add here, really. I mean, I'm in favor of the project uh very much. So I think it's a beautiful project. Um I I probably fall on team replication rather than having to because of all the reasons that um we've heard tonight. But I'm hearing from everyone that this we dish, we should consider the the Heritage Board. And if that's the right thing to do, then we will do the right thing. Um yeah, no concerns on the pool. I think we heard that loud and clear. Um yeah, the only additional thing I would say is it would be great if there were trees being replanted as opposed to uh screening. But to be honest, when I look at the plans, I wasn't really sure where if there's room there for it and um I'm, as I said in the prior meeting, I was very happy that the redwoods are going to be preserved as much as they can in the front yard. Um and any other other comment I wanted to add was, you know, if there are comments to the project, it's always helping helpful to get them. This is from neighbors and and people in the community. It's always helping to get them in kind of early on, right near the beginning, um when the project first posted. So but thank you.
Thank you, Natasha. It's okay. Um yeah, I'm pretty much in line what you've uh you've heard previously and I uh I also agree with Jeff. How do you like that? We've got two, we've got two votes, Jeff. Um so yeah, I I do also want to
Why am I controversial? I just speak my mind.
Um yeah, and uh you know, I I I do realize that, you know, we had a lot of questions when the submission was first made uh at the last uh last meeting when we heard this. Um so you know, I know there were a lot of questions and I do think the uh the applicants have really stepped forward to uh address our questions and uh and concerns. Um so yeah, I I am in uh favor in making, you know, findings uh for approval and um you know, with the with the proviso is uh is is Laura articulated um that uh the changes to the historical element be um revisited by the uh by the Heritage Preservation Board um to um basically come up with the best possible solution. Um I I absolutely confident that uh that Mr. Wilkinson and the Hope Coopers have uh have examined this uh this carefully uh in terms of replacing and taking into account the many considerations, including the environmental considerations and the safety considerations. Um the one little, you know, details when we do uh craft a motion, um which will once again involve the Heritage Board that we sort of uh maybe separate out that front door of just as a uh sort of a a a a show of uh of, you know, maybe going the extra mile to preserve whatever can be, to see if that front door actually can be preserved without any jeopardy to safety or to um or to the environmental integrity of the house. Um so if that could be, you know, examined by the Heritage Board as well, um I think I would personally appreciate that. Uh other than that, I mean, you know, this is a, you know, it's a, it's a a challenging product project. It's a, you know, it's a uh very uh very interesting program uh with regard to uh with regard to the breezeway. Um I I I think trying to trying to glue that back onto the the house would be, you know, incongruous to say the least. Um so I don't think, so I think I agree with my fellow commissioners that uh that that, you know, design element should be preserved as it is on the plans that were submitted to us. So with that, uh could uh could I ask someone to make a motion? Oh, okay, Laura, go ahead. You're smiling.
You're on mute, Laura.
I know. Uh and my I have slow internet, so challenge. Um, okay, um I would like to move approval of historic review, design review, heritage heritage tree removal um twenty one thirty eight or forty seven Madron Avenue as modified and presented today with the caveat that the um applicant and their architect needs to work with the Historic Preservation Board um to find a solution on the historic elements that works for them.
Thank you. And then subject
I'll second that.
Yeah, and all of that subject to the um uh to the other conditions of approval as well. Uh so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Or opposed? I see none. And Elise could, I think we should take a a roll call on this.
Yes, I'll get it. Um so Chair Councillor.
Aye.
Uh Commissioner Talbar.
Aye.
Commissioner Wagstaff.
Aye.
Commissioner Swisher.
Aye.
And Commissioner Chalmers.
Aye.
Hey, so thank you very much. Uh thank you uh to the applicants that represented uh for your forbearance uh and good luck. Okay, um we are going to move on to the second public hearing item. Um and uh just for the record, uh this uh this property is in fairly close proximity to my own residence. So I did examine the uh I did take a look at the list of uh properties that uh where I would have to be recused of this is not on that list. Just for the record, I wanted to state that. Uh so we are moving on to um uh design, design review, floor area ratio exception and fence height exception twenty two dash zero six or twenty Monte Vista Avenue. And if we could get the staff report to start with.
Okay. So this is an application, uh the applicants requesting approval of design review and a floor area ratio exception to permit the construction of a new three thousand two hundred and forty four square foot two-story residence in ADU. A point four three F A R is requested where point four zero is lose my notes inside. Where point four zero is permitted by code. The floor area excludes the two hundred and fifty three square foot attached to ADU. A fence height exception is requested for an area of six foot tall fence along the street side property line to enclose the rear yard and for a shrubber along the north side yard in the rear yard area. The site is flat and it's seventy five hundred square feet with an average grade of three percent. It's located in the historic Baltimore Park neighborhood and it's a corner lot. There are many street parking spaces adjacent to the site. The proposed work entails the complete demolition of the existing one thousand eight hundred twenty two square foot three-bedroom, two-bath residence and detached single-car garage. The existing structure would be replaced by a new two-story residence, attached accessory dwelling unit and detached single-car garage in a pool. The proposed project will meet the required setbacks and lot coverage and it's just under the thirty foot height limit. The proposed work entails the complete demolition of the existing residence, uh the existing sorry, I think I'm repeating myself here with this. Um let me switch over to here. So this is the the new proposed residence. It does have a very interesting roof design with the cables kind of slipping from this one side of the residence, which I think really helps in terms of the adding, allowing the covered porches and some articulation to the residence. Um the floor plan, as I noted, does include an ADU on this lower level. It would have a full kitchen and exterior entrance, and then this room would not count towards the floor area ratio limit. And then the primary residence bedrooms on the upper level. Uh staff believes that findings can be made to approve the project. The design and finishes would be compatible with the prevailing Baltimore Park neighborhood character and scale. The neighborhood is a mix of one and two-story residences and many homes at the end of Monte Vista Avenue are two-story. And the residence at the rear of the subject property at ten La Rosa Way is also a two-story residence. The proposed design does not appear appear to result in significant impacts on light year reviews of adjacent properties. And the applicants have submitted ten letters of support from the project for the project. Here's the front elevation and the rear elevation as well as the proposed garage design. Regarding the floor area ratio permit, staff finds uh the proposed design has employed mass reducing techniques such that the additional square footage over the floor area is minimized and does not appear to overbuild the lot. And the new residents would be compatible with the development pattern in the neighborhood. The only concern that staff has with the project relates to concerns about the parking area and visibility. The parking is located at the rear of the site, which is a positive feature of the project. The applicant is requesting a fence height exception to install a new six-foot tall fence and driveway gate to enclose the rear yard area and pool area. And the new fence includes a driveway gate to close the driveway and garage off from the roadway and and the fence and to provide some screening of the pool area. And they're proposing to keep the And they're proposing to keep the top three feet of the driveway gate transparent. In order to allow visibility when the vehicles are backing out of the driveway. Staff's only concern is just that this may not be. Are worried about the long term viability of this option and if residents will in the future want to. Have more privacy in their pool yard area and change something about the design of the fence that would preclude the cars from seeing the road as they're backing out. But we do also want to acknowledge that. The way that the site is here on the corner, there's a lot of street parking and it's likely that the applicants may not use the parking area. Especially because the way it's set up with the garage having these large glass doors and the reinforced turf for the parking area. So if they weren't using the parking, there's obviously not a visibility concern with them backing out of the spaces. Staff suggested in the staff report, one solution to the problem of the visibility would just be to relocate the fence around the visibility triangle. So the applicants could have an enclosed safe pool area. But the cars can come in and out of the the parking spaces without having any visibility issues. There is a little concern with the small area of their neighbor's fence. It's also over three feet tall, but the applicants. Would be seeking to work with their neighbor to try to modify that design so that it's only three feet of solid material in this area. So staff is recommending approval of the project. Again, our recommendation would be to have the fence be relocated around the parking area. And the applicants could have a solid six foot fence in that location without creating any visibility concerns. But an alternative would be to allow the parking or the gate as proposed. And then we would recommend a condition of approval that just requires. That any area above the three feet of solid material remain transparent in that visibility triangle, just to ensure that vehicles see any. Pedestrians or bicyclists that are might be coming down the sidewalk. So that concludes my staff report unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Elise? Laura?
Just have a clarifying question because I read this and in the drawing that's, I don't know, page this is, it's the one that shows the drawing of the fence. With the. It's the landscape constant, it's L one. On the drawing of the fence, it is, I read this, it says the 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 solid part of the fence is six feet and then three feet of the lattice. So is this just a mistake and the whole thing is actually six feet, not nine feet?
Yes, it's it's a typo, I think, on the plan. So you're correct. I could share my screen so you can see what we're referring to. Let's see. You're referring to the section right here that shows six feet here. The overall height of the. The overall height of the fence would be six feet.
So if you see it, it's exactly, it's the.
Right. It's, this is, this is a six foot overall height. I think that. If a former design had a taller solid fence and that notation probably just wasn't moved is my guess. But the the fence proposed is six feet. It's not six feet with three feet of lattice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any? My other fellow commissioners, go ahead, Rock.
One, at least again, on a four point one. That the rendering there doesn't shows it what what looks like a three foot fence going the entire length of La Rosa, but. One does and one doesn't or something.
Let me go to a three point one you're referring to.
A four point one. I I think.
Let me, let me pull that up too, so you could see it.
You probably can't see my arrow, but this, the bottom, the bottom right.
Over here?
Yeah, so this is a three foot fence in the front.
Right.
And that doesn't show any higher going down this the sidewalk than the one in the front, but. But I see it on the other, the other.
Yeah, it jumps at the end of the building, right? So that's right, right over here. It it goes up to. This is the existing fence and then at the end of the building, it goes up to six feet tall with a solid portion. Everywhere that could have a solid portion before it hits the the visibility triangle.
Okay.
And then they're showing here the the gate behind it.
Yeah.
Um, one quick question. If I recall, code requires around a pool, a non-climbable fence. And is this, does this comply with that?
So I. Would probably defer to the architect to answer that question. I thought there was more than one way to meet that requirement. I do, I do have some concerns and I think the applicant does too about the shorter section along. This area because this is lower than even. It's three and a half feet maybe in the section, so. But I I would defer to the architect to see if that if that meets pool code with, because it. My understanding is that maybe a pool cover might comply as well with without.
Yeah, I think the strip of pool covers on, it's just, it's his concern, you know, this neighborhood has a lot of kids in it and. Attractive nuisances like pools can lead to pretty tragic things.
Uh, at least the 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 solution that that you were proposing about moving that, moving the fence over with that, that would then create. A full enclosure, would it not?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Great, and I've got a, I should probably know the answer to this myself. With regard to the to the ADU, you know, there are steps leading into it. Are there any, are there any specific ADA requirements for that configuration?
Not, not for single family homes. I've never heard of any requirement for accessibility.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions. For for at least from the commission, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would care to speak and I see a hand raised. Identified as PPA. There we go. You've just been promoted. And if you're unmuted, you may speak. There we go.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, commissions. My name is Jared Polsky. I'm here virtually with Spencer and Susie Doyle and Elizabeth Brar, my project architect. We, Elizabeth and I are Spencer and Susan Doyle's architects, and we've been working on this project for for quite some time. Our objectives have always been to create a family home that stands as a good neighbor to the surrounding residences and fits in well with the neighborhood aesthetic. And as you can see from your packet, we've received many letters of support from the neighbors. The site has a, is not flat. It has a gentle slope from front to back, from east to west, from west to east. And from the beginning of the design process, our marching orders were to create a family home that would have an easy flowing transition. To the rear yard. The design has a small front entry porch off of a Montevista side, sort of a welcoming adjunct in the street. And the more formal rooms of the house, the living room and the dining room are off the front foyer. The ground floor then steps down internally within the house. To from the front area off Montevista to a spacious kitchen, breakfast area and family room at the rear. And those spaces lead out to a porch that relates to the rear yard and the pool. And I I want to thank staff for their description of the massing of the house. I could quote it that we've used mass reducing techniques. The square footage is divided into two structures and the design steps the second story in from the ground floor of the front, staggers the wall planes in the south side. Includes multiple second story roof planes and uses the ground story roof line to break up most of the two story elements. So. And to be clear, we're not asking for any variances, but we require an FAR exception and a fence height exception. We're pleased to see that the staff supports our request for the FAR exception, given their description of the mass reducing techniques. And I also want to thank Larry Chu for his letter. As he noted, Montevista is a wide street. This is a corner lot. There's no canyon effect. And there are four other FAR exceptions in the immediate neighborhood and three, in fact, three of the four other exceptions have greater FARs than what we're requesting. So this leaves our request for a fence height exception. The pool in the rear yard needs to be safe. And code requires a six foot tall fence. We understand staff's concerns that were there to be a solid fence fence from the garage out to the street. This would create a visibility hazard. When a car would back out into La Rosa. So during the design process, we reached out to the Department of Public Works. And they provided us this design with an open lattice fence from forty thirty six inches above rain to the top of the fence or gate. And this fence and gate design, the lot would be secure, but a driver backing out would not be able to see, would be able to see over the solid fencing to the street. So we agreed with the DPW's design and we included it in our supplemental and the bottom is solid, so you would kept climb up the fence from the for the first thirty six inches. To quote the staff report again, this, the Department of Public Works has reviewed the proposed fence design as generally satisfied that the gate and fence. Design with the open panels at the upper three feet would provide adequate sightlines to the west, but the neighbor's fence would continue to block the sightline views to the east. So as the staff reports suggest, the Doyles would follow staff's instructions to make their best effort to modify this shared fence with the neighbor. Such that it meets the city's site distance requirements, no obstructions over thirty six inches. So we would like to have the planning commission, if you would agree with us, to modify the condition of approval to be the one that staff suggests as an alternate. Condition of approval number four, which is on page five of their staff report. That says, the property owner shall maintain the visible visibility triangle on sheets shown on sheets one, A one point one and L one of the proof plans. Any areas above the three foot solid fencing shall remain transparent to maintain visibility for vehicles exiting the site. So the Doyles will work with their neighbors to extend the fence on the property line with the lattice top section. And we also have a letter of support from those neighbors at ten La Rosa. However, the house has recently sold, so the Doyles will reach out to the new neighbors for the support of the fence configuration. There is also another small communication mistake on our teams who put part. That landscape plan references a vine fence that could restrict the use of the auto gate and blocks lines, outlines, sightlines to the west. We have no intention of having any climbing vines on the fence. We're not going to have a vine fence and our landscape architect will use plants that maintain transparency and that will be part of our building permit set of drawings. We would suggest another condition of approval that would preclude vines on the fences that may block visibility. Now Spencer and Suzie might want to say a few words. Elizabeth and I are happy to answer any questions you might have, and I thank you for your your attention.
Thank you very much. Yes. Would would your client wish to address the commission?
Yes, hi, my name is Spencer Doyle. I'm here with the team. We've been working on the project since two thousand nineteen and we're excited to work with you on its approval. We've worked very hard with Jared and our neighbors. To build a a home that is within the aesthetic of the Baltimore Port neighborhood. And also, we 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 give great credit to the staff report. We appreciate you. Really understanding the detail and calling out the details that went into us trying to build a home. That had the minimal impact on density in the neighborhood. Our favorite feature is the expanded. Front porch. We spend a lot of time out there. We think it's a current feature of the existing home that. Is loved by the neighborhood and we wanted to expand that connection to the neighborhoods. That's our. Our favorite piece of the the project and Suzie and I are also a little. Excited to work with new technologies to improve the carbon footprint of the home. Right now, we get a lot of notices from PG&E about how how the home doesn't have a lot of really good environmental. Characteristics and so. From a environmentalist perspective, we're very happy to work with new technologies to improve the carbon footprint. So. For all those reasons, we're excited to bring this project in front of you and we thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Okay, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for the applicant or for Jared?
Hey, I had a quick question for Jared and and I just don't know the answer myself, but. If the gate to the garage, which looks like a lot like a pool room, but is left open. Then there is access to the swimming pool for, so I it it's a safety question and I don't. I don't know whether you have to have a fence between the garage and the and the other fence. Assuming you left it open, you drove your car out. You wouldn't want somebody, some kid maybe wandering in in into the pool area, so.
We have to be vigilant while keeping that gate closed.
And and La Rosa is not a very busy street.
Sort of a one block long street.
I know.
Yeah, I think you have to be more than just vigilant and keeping it closed. And there are solutions to that. We we have a pool, Jared, at our place on eighty eight Wiltshire. One of the things we've done is we've put internal fences in that are six feet high that are non-climbable. And so you could easily put one, you know, with that like one by two wire lattice that is basically see through. That allows for, you know, safety. I I'm obviously very particularly concerned about this stuff because I, that's my job, so. I, you know, I think that that might be something to consider putting in just for that added measure of safety.
And also a pool safety cover as well, right?
Yes, yeah, if you can. My pool, I can't do that, but yeah.
Hundred percent.
Thank you. Any, do we have other questions for the applicant or for Mr. Polsky? Okay. See none. I'm going to invite other attendees of the meeting if they would care to comment or ask questions about this. Project and if that's, if that's the case, if you could please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, give another five seconds and then I shall now close the public meeting and bring it back to the commission for adjudication. Had to find a different word. Natasha, can I start with you? Go go around the other way.
Thank you. So, yeah, you know, I like this project. I was really glad to see the number of neighborhood, the number of neighborhood support letters that were provided, especially from the two adjoining neighbors. I thought that was great. I can make the findings for the design review and the floor area ratio. I think there's plenty of space to work with here. It's an appropriate design for this neighborhood. On the fight, on the fence height exception. No, I don't normally like these just because I I hate the idea of having a six foot fence in the front, in the the set, in the setback. But this is a clearly a backyard with a pool, so they're looking for privacy here, so we should be making the exception here. To be honest, I wasn't too sure which way to go on this fence and setting it back against the visibility lines. I felt like if the if the applicant would work with it, then great, they they could do it. I I'm not sure how attractive it would be and how workable it is and they clearly provided a compelling argument as to why. They can see through the the top three feet of the trellis, so. If we could include the two conditions of approval that would always. Keep those top three feet clear. And then, and then the condition of approval number four regarding the the neighbor's fence on the La Rosa side. That was read in the in the by the architect, then I think I can find favor with this project.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Are you muted or?
I'm trying. Like, like I said, my internet's slow. Okay. Um, I like this project. I I think it's very attractive. I think they've done a nice job with. Um, I like this project. Um, I, I think it's very attractive. Um, I think they've done a, a nice job with it. Um, makes sense for the neighborhood. I don't think it's overbuilt. You know, I, I think it fits in very nicely and they've done a good job. What I wondered about the, you know, since it seems to really boil down to the fence, um, and the concerns that staff raised about visibility. I, I feel like the people that are most impacted by the visibility, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, are them backing out, right, of, from the garage. Um, and if, if they feel that they are going to have a fence that they can see through, I guess I'm okay with doing what they're doing, um, because it's really them that will have to, you know, figure it out. And if they can't see to back up, they're going to have to move their fence. So, and, and they're going to have incentive to not put anything in front of it that they can't see through. So I think I could actually see clear to, to approve the fence as designed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Brock?
Yeah, um, I, I like the house. I think, uh, they've done a good job. Um, I think, do, do we need a parking, um, variance for this? Because it's, it's three, three spaces, which is not part of the, do we not?
There's a, there's an allowance that allows, um, the fourth pit space to be on the street and circum, certain circumstances and the site meets those circumstances. It'll take me just a moment to find the spot in the code, but it, it has to do with the, I think the, yeah, the, the condition of the road, like allowing for additional guest parking.
But it can do that with the motion too, but I was just, uh, I didn't see it on the, um. I don't actually have a problem with, uh, backing out. Um, uh, like I said, I've been down La Rosa many, many times. There's, there's just not much traffic there. Um, and I think once the gate is open and you're backing your car out, you have pretty good visibility. Um, so, um, I can find, make all the findings for the project.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, I think it's a great project. I think the houses on Montevista are, you know, there, this is going to be similar in nature to the several houses, which much bigger FARs than this one. Again, my only concern is to make sure that there's safety with that fence. I like the design of the fence. I think that you can do internal, uh, you know, see-through, you know, wire fences to help preserve that safety. Uh, but that's something that I, I am sure that they are interested in working on as well. Um, so I would support this project as, as is.
Thank you. Um, so that leaves me. Um, so I guess this is another Jared Polsky project that has me insanely jealous. It's, uh, what, what, what I find remarkable is, um, is how well, uh, it integrates, um, with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, it's, that's really stunning. Um, a- and also, uh, I, I, I really, I really appreciate the attention to the, to the streetscape, uh, and having, uh, having the, the, the structure be sort of inviting for everybody who goes by it. Uh, and, uh, that's, uh, that's actually one of the, the objectives of our strategic plan. In fact, in several, several ordinances is to, is to create this kind of a, a lively streetscape and, and this project absolutely succeeds in, in doing that. So, uh, with that, I'm in, I'm, I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners that, uh, I can make the findings for approval um, with enthusiasm. Um, I am, uh, I am sort of placing, you know, my trust, you know, as a commissioner in, uh, your attention to the, the safety requirements for backing out. Because no, it's true. It is not a, it is not, I live quite close to there and it's not, it is not a busy street. But there are, you know, there are kids on the street and we also now have electric vehicles that don't make a whole lot of noise. So you have that other warning factor which, uh, which is, uh, gradually disappearing, um, from our, you know, from our society. So, uh, yeah, so if you could, uh, we're going to trust you to be extra vigilant about, you know, when, when, when building the house that, uh, the, the design of that fence and the configuration of that fence, um, does preserve the, the safety of the, uh, of, of people who are passing by. So with that, uh, I guess we can get a motion of any volunteers.
I will volunteer. Um, I would move approval of, um, design review twenty-two, uh, oh six, twenty Montevista Avenue, uh, floor area ratio and fence height exception.
Do we need to add the conditions? The two additional conditions?
It would, it would be, um, deleting condition four and replacing it with the alternative condition four that's in, on page five of the staff report. And there already is another condition eighteen in the staff report that covers, um, the text that they had read. I'm sorry, sixteen, sixteen does.
Basically subject to the, um, uh, condition of approval as, as amended.
Yeah, I guess the question is, um,
Regarding the neighbors, the neighbor's fence, they were going to work with the neighbor to try and resolve.
So that, that's under, yeah, sixteen. Um, the public works department essentially says if it's infeasible, they need to talk to the public works department. That was the only requirement. Um, so they have the opportunity to talk with the neighbor to meet the site distance requirement. And if not, they just have to, I think essentially they're asking the, I'm just submit a letter that says why they can't. So it doesn't, um, I guess it doesn't require that to be lowered, but it, it requires them to make their best efforts to do that.
So, um, I will include that they make their best effort to, uh, to work with the neighbor on the shared fence to provide visibility.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
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 I'm all opposed, uh, none. And Elise, could you call the roll on this one?
Chair Kinsler?
Hi.
Commissioner Tauber? Commissioner Waxstaff?
Hi.
Commissioner Swisher?
Hi.
And Commissioner Chalmers?
Hi.
Pushing past, thank you very much for the applicant. Thank you for your patience. And that concludes this item. Um, we can now move on to our remaining business items. The first of which is the approval of the minutes from our meeting of June fourteenth. Could I get a motion to approve said minutes?
I make a motion to approve said minutes.
I can second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I, I think we'll risk not taking a real call on that one. Um, any planning commissioner reports?
Um, I will be up in the mountains at the next meeting, just, uh, in terms of FYI and quorums.
And, uh, I will be in Acadia National Forest in Maine at the next meeting.
Can I, can I ask, um, I'd say you've heard into July twelfth? Or the July twenty-sixth?
July, the July twelfth one.
Okay, I, uh, I think my intention was to cancel that meeting anyway. So.
Okay, perfect.
So our next meeting's on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, there's no notices that went out for the, for the July twelfth. That meeting will be canceled. The next meeting is on July twenty-sixth.
Okay, um, so, um, you know, I will no longer be officially on the commission at that date. Um, nor, um, well, Laura, um, I, I will be out of the country on July twenty-sixth, as soon as I know.
Thanks.
I can't fill in.
Okay. And so everyone else will be around or able to attend on July twenty-sixth if we have items on that meeting?
I said that I would attend.
Okay, I appreciate that. So the, the city council will be considering, they did get another application and there's a possibility that they could appoint on the twentieth. So there may not be an issue, but, but right now, right now, um,
Okay.
We would, it sounds, it sounds like we'd at least have three for the meeting and then four if, um, Ms. Tauber would join us.
But did they, have they done any, um, interviews for the?
They entered, yeah, they interviewed for, they didn't, um, I don't want to say they didn't want to appoint them. They, they kept it open, but they wanted additional applicants. And so, um, they, they've just requested more applications. So now there'll, there's five applications submitted and, um, if it's still open, if anyone knows anyone that's interested in applying, they should submit up an application soon.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, the application, just as I accost people in the street, um, the applications are open until when?
Oh. I thought it said July fifteenth.
Oh, thank you. Um,
Right, okay.
That, that sounds right because that would be enough time to have them considered on the twentieth.
Okay.
Well, do you have any more design professional friends?
Yeah, I, I have somebody I'm gonna harangue.
Somebody in your neighborhood, I think you should help harangue also.
Yeah, really.
So great. Um, so I guess that would be, any, any other, uh, commissioner comments? Okay, see none. I'll just say that, uh, this being my last, uh, official meeting, there's been obviously a distinct privilege and high honor to work with all of you. Thank you very, very much.
Been great.
And with that, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hey, thank you all very.
All right. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you for serving. That's, I appreciate it as a resident of Larkspur.
My, thank you.
Even though we haven't worked together long on the commission.
Well, well, at least you're not rid of me yet because I've.
Oh, yeah, you're still on my other committee too. And I really appreciate you staying on that committee.
Yeah, he's, he better not leave that one.
All right. Thank you all. Good night.
All right, good night.
Good night.